Meeting of Florence Planning and Zoning Commission, Mr. Harmon, will you take the role?
I will actually take the role.
Okay, Ms. Benitez.
Commissioner Capolongo.
Present.
Commissioner Pro.
Present.
Commissioner Simmons.
Present.
Vice Chair Frost.
Present.
Chairman Pranzo.
Present.
Chairman, we have a quorum.
Thank you. I will say the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Our agenda says discussion approval, disapproval in minutes of the regularly meeting conducted on January 7th. And I think that's the wrong date, is it?
It actually is the correct date. We decided to review and have those approved before moving on to the minutes for the previous meeting.
Okay. All right, then I'll open up to the commission. Any comments? Questions?
These minutes were the ones that were denied in the previous meeting.
Yes. I'm aware.
Mr. Chairman, with the corrections that were made to the minutes as suggested in the last meeting, I think they look, they read well now, and I would move for approval.
I'll second that motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, motion carried. New business. Presentation, motion to approve, approve with conditions or deny of a preliminary plat, PZ 2019 Freedom Farms parcels A through D. Who gets to present?
Chairman, I'm the one who's presenting. We do also have a representative here for Freedom Farms. I will begin. Preliminary plat for Freedom Farms. Today will be for parcels A through D. This is only a section of the entire Freedom Farms development. The entirety of the development is 534.09 acres, but this section is only about 151.36 acres. If you're wondering, this site is located at the southwest of Judd Road in Copper Road. I will pull up a quick map. So this is pretty much parcel A. Coming up on Judd Road in the northern half. That is a 98 units. Then we have parcel B, which is 65. My computer would not do this for me. There we go. Parcel B, this section right here. And then at 147 units, we have parcel C and 113 with parcel D. The recommendation by the town is that it does meet the recommendation or the requirements made by the town and also of the Freedom Farms. We do have the list of conditions, the staff report. That concludes my present. I know Robert also had a presentation he would like to share.
Good evening. My name is Rob Longacre. I'm with the WLB group. Also, I believe that logged out of the meeting is Josh Brimhall. And he represents the ownership group for the property. And I don't have too much to say tonight, but we worked on the rezoning of the property. It's hard to believe it's been 11 years ago. And finally, at this point, we've gotten to the point where we've been able to prepare the preliminary plat for this first phase of Freedom Farms. My clients, the property owners, appreciate the time tonight to consider this request. They've been working hard. They have interest from builder groups in this property. And they're anxious to get the preliminary plat approved so that they can continue to work and find a buyer or buyers for the property. And then move the project forward to preparation of final plat or plats and sudden improvement plans and look to make this development happen. So with that, we do appreciate the work that Maricela did on this project for us and the staff report she prepared. We also appreciate the review by other staff members of the Town of Florence as well. We also express our condolences. I understand that Christian Collins had passed away recently and he had been reviewing this plan, so we're very sorry to hear the news of his passing, but Josh and I are here tonight to respond to any questions or comments that you may have.
Open up to the commission, questions, comments?
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of questions and comments, I guess.
Great. Mr. Longacre, do you have video?
I do have video capability.
Would you turn it on? There you go. Go ahead, Vice Chair Frost.
Thank you. And one of the, one of them, just kind of, I guess, just a better understanding, on page two of four in our packet. The picture that is shown there shows the boundaries of parcel A, B, but there is no boundary separating parcel C and D. And it's there later in the packet, but just if the same exhibit is going to be used for council and others, we might want to just insert that boundary in there, so it's a little more obvious where the between C and D is.
Okay, that's on page 204, you said?
Page 204 of our packet. And then the same thing is also on WLB Plan Sheet 2 of 31. It shows parcel C and parcel D, but it doesn't show the boundary between them. Yeah, see if that makes sense. And your plans packet would be sheet 2 of 31.
I do see that, yes.
That's just a, you know, it's clarified later, but that just might be a clear up. On sheet 8 of 31. Now wait till you get there if you want, if you'd like. Okay. On the bottom of the sheet, it says match line, see sheet 10. I believe it's sheet nine. I couldn't get 10 to match up, but I can get nine to match up, okay?
Okay, I see your point.
And then I have have a question on that page as well. When you look on, and I'm looking at sheet seven and sheet eight at the same time. Behind lot 71 and 72 on sheet seven, lot 73 on sheet eight, and lots 10 through 16 on sheet eight. There is a kind of a narrow area in there. What is that used for?
I am on sheet eight right now, looking at the area. I believe you just referred to the area to the west or behind lots 10 through 16.
Exactly.
Okay. Yes, so that would be a common area. And that would receive landscaping.
Well, the reason I ask is, I don't know how our police will be able to patrol that. Because you can't see it from any of the roadways. They'd literally have to get out of their car to be able to come investigate those areas and make sure that there nothing happened back there. That's a concern.
Okay. So let me just get back to that sheet again. And you're also referring to the continuation of that area. You mentioned some other lots as well.
Onto lot seven, where it joins with lot seven behind, on lot 71 and 72. That track D goes up there as well. It just, just creates a place where things can happen that might not be conducive to the spirit of the community.
Okay, well. I mean, I do see your point. Suppose one option, if we wish to do it, to rectify it, is those law lines could be extended out to that property line to eliminate the common area. It's not being used for drainage. So we could do that to eliminate the common area. That is a concern. We have enough open space so that we would still be able to meet the open space requirement. But, you know, if it's your pleasure to make some modifications there, to remove that common area, we could certainly accommodate that.
I would definitely support that, so we don't create a spot where our our guys in blue can't patrol without getting out of their cars. Now I'm going to sheets.
Honey, before you move on. Could you clarify, my sheets are not numbered. So could you clarify? So that when we make a motion, we can have it in there, where exactly we want to eliminate that common space?
It was, it's on sheet seven of 31 and sheet eight of 31 of the plans of the plat. And it's west of lots 71, 72, lots 10 through 16, or I guess 71, 72, and 73, and lots 10 through 16.
Through 16?
16, yes, 1-6.
Okay, thank you. Sorry to interrupt.
No, no problem. Thanks for the clarification.
So I, just a question, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chairman Frost. So what is, what, you know, I understand the concern you have, but I don't understand what's west of of that boundary line there. I mean, is that another development? I can't tell by, I just can't tell by looking at this, at the pages. It looks like a railroad track or something. I don't know. Is that, is that going to be other developed property at some point, or another street road, another road running through there? The backing up to those lots?
If I'm remembering correctly, and Larry and Mari Sel, you can correct me. I believe this is the property that's been taken down by the sports complex that we reviewed about a month and a half ago, the big sports complex.
Correct. That's one of the properties that Grinders is looking at, yes.
So that would be adjacent to that, those plots then, or is?
Yes.
Yes.
So what? Oh, okay.
Okay. So my next comment is on sheets 11 and 12. Which match up together. Sheet 11 of 31 and sheet 12 of 31. And this is, this is just a comment from previous experience. When I was looking through here, I just noted that there's only two hydrants. So, you know, it's not a planning and zoning thing, but it's a public safety thing. There's only a, there's one hydrant by lot 78 on sheet 11 and one hydrant by lot 104 on sheet 12. So you might want to check your hydrant spacing there.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, the hydrant spacing is part of the final plat improvement plans that have to be approved through the Fire Marshal and Public Works Engineering. At this stage, preliminary plats are for the lotting, the street layouts, and just preliminary drainage. So the fact that they put some hydrants on there is fine, but this is not the final plan for their distribution, and they will be reviewed.
I well understand that. I just thought and thought I would just raise my hand while I saw it, so. Next comment would be on sheet 18 of 31. Now I'm on the landscape, or not a landscape, the gradient drainage plans. And I guess the first question is, is for staff. What kind of guidance do we give the development community when they come in and prepare landscaping to go in in these landscape traps?
Guidance is mostly within the PUD itself. As for the town requirements. As long as they use the plants from the Arizona Water Resource, and there's enough to where it's not sparsely placed, then we're that's what we mostly go by when looking over the landscape.
Okay. I, and I, and I guess, Rob, with you and Josh listening in. This area will be just served by Johnson Utilities. Johnson Utilities is a member of the Central Arizona Groundwater Replenishment District, so whatever water they use. The future residents of this will have to pay into CAGRIT on their monthly bill. I live in one of those areas, so I see that on my monthly bill, so I just just want to express my desire to, when you use turf, make it usable, playable turf, not aesthetic turf. Have areas that are big enough that the kids can enjoy. I'm totally for that. Don't turf slopes. Make it playable turf, because I don't want to, I don't want to see water wasted, and I don't see the, want to see the residents have to pay any higher CAGRIT fees than they'll have to. And I, I I know this is just, you know, purely schematic at this point in time, but I just noting that the slopes in the basins are all very straight slopes. And would hope that when we see this again, that the slopes will have variance to them to provide some interest.
You bet. We can undulate the slopes to create a little more natural feel.
Perfect. And that, Mr. Chairman, is the extent of my comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments or questions? I have a question. Now, it's been a little over 10 years, so I really don't remember the PUD that well. So I guess the first question is, is the preliminary plat in agreement with the PUD?
Yes.
I'm sorry?
Yes, it is, yes. It was last updated, I believe, in 2010.
Yeah. We've changed a lot since then.
And some of the setback requirements were also recently changed. We make sure that these follow those changes.
All right, well, when this comes to before us as a final plat. The commission will need copies of the PUD.
Okay.
Okay?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, if I might, the final plats only go to town council.
Hang on, I can't hear you.
I'm sorry, the Go take care of the children first, I guess.
Now you can make Calpurnia. I thought I'd save her for later in the show.
Oh, okay. Mr. Chairman, final plats go to the town council only. But we can forward a copy of this PUD to you, just for future reference, because as you can tell by this particular application, there's going to be several preliminary plats coming in front of you.
All right.
And one day, we should note that at that point, the final plat required full engineering drawings, full landscape plans, all those kinds of details, or it is put in front of the council for their review.
All right, so where we are is that the PUD is in full agreement with this preliminary plat. We're not going to have trouble with road widths or any of these other things that have been settled over the last decade.
No, these are in conformance.
Okay. I have a request. For those of us, or I shouldn't say us, it's really me. Putting these puzzles together to get a look at what we're doing is it's cumbersome and it's, it's difficult, particularly when the pages aren't numbered. My request is, when we have something like this where there's drawings involved. If it's at all possible, I'd like it so that we could get it as one drawing, whether mailed to us or available for pickup, but it would make review a hell of a lot easier if we were looking at one drawing. Especially during a meeting, instead of fumbling through trying to find the right sheet. Being able to open up the drawing and follow along with the person who's talking. Is that at all possible?
Mr. Chairman, as you recall, when we were meeting live, we provided packets, you know, for you prior to
Yes, I do.
Yeah, and we can go ahead and do those and have them in our wheelout basket available at the same time that we email them to you.
That would be wonderful.
Yeah, no problem at all.
Thank you, because these sheets are killing me. Okay, any other questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman, I guess a question of Larry. I just wanted to make sure that I didn't misunderstand what you just said about further landscaping drawings and amenity drawings and things like that. Do, do we get a chance to see those?
We can send them to you informationally, absolutely, if you wish. As, as Mari Selah said, we do follow ADWR's plant list and things like that. But the full engineering drawings and landscape drawings are submitted as part of a final plat submittal.
It almost seems like that we're missing part of our role as the Planning and Zoning Commission to look at things before they go to council. If all we see is the preliminary plat, we don't see the amenities that the people will be getting. And we don't have a chance to comment on those things. That, that almost seems like we're missing part of our duty there. To me, if we're, if we, if we sit as the as the group who looks at building aesthetics and other things like that, why aren't we looking at the amenities that go in into developments? This is not just for this development, this is the comment in general.
Yeah, well, we are in the process of actually updating our application processes and requirements and things of that nature, and we will add that to considerations.
Yeah, this doesn't quite work, does it?
Getting editorial comments from the background.
Yeah, I'll go do something about it.
It's fine.
Yeah, I think, of course, Mr. Chairman stepped out, but I, I think, I mean, I, I want to Frost, I think I think, you know, we're, we're missing something here in terms of what our, what we're charged with if we're not able to see and comment. Just kind of common sense, really, from my view, I don't know.
Yeah, and, yeah, we're just following the lead, of course, that we inherited, and we're, you know, we're open to make alterations with how we process these to better suit your needs.
Yeah, okay. I just want to be recorded as agreeing with Chair, Vice Chairman Frost on that issue, so. Okay.
Well, it's up to the council. If they drop the ball. They own it. All right. We have any other questions or comments? Are we, am I online?
Yeah, you're, you're good.
God, what a quiet group. All right. I'll move that we approve PZ 2019 Freedom Farms, Parcels A through D. With the contingency that the public space along lots west of lots 71, 72, and 73, and 10 through 16. Would it be correct to say eliminated?
Yeah, and, and I'm not sure which, which parcel that's even in right now. Let me look in.
If I'm reading the plans correctly, I believe that's parcel A.
Yes, parcel A.
Did I get that correct, Mr. Frost? Do I have everything in there?
I, I believe you do. Thank you.
Okay, so I have a second motion.
I'll second the motion.
Sorry.
So we have motion by Chairman Pranzo, second by Vice Chair Frost. All those in favor?
Simmons.
Aye.
Wait a minute, this, this is not working. Do I have a mo, do I?
I, I believe
All those in favor?
Wait, hold on.
I, Mr. Simmons was the second on that one.
He was?
I was.
Oh, okay. And second by Mr. Simmons. Wow. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. All those opposed? Motion carried. All right, moving right along. Public hearing motion to recommend approval, approval with conditions or denial, the adoption of modifications to the Town of Florence Development Code. Use, district use regulation tables to allow the permitted use the sale and processing of medical and recreational marijuana. Do we have a presentation on this?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. We brought this to you at your last meeting as an informational item. Basically, the staff report hasn't changed per se. We've just added a suggested motion. This was heard by the town council on January 4th as a response to the voter initiative Proposition 207 that was approved last November by the voters of Arizona. The state has been putting together their regulations. There are some draft proposals that have been submitted to the, to the communities from the Arizona League of Cities as far as how licensing and things like that can be handled. But at the January 4th meeting, the town council discussed these things. It did adopt a, a, an ordinance as to the handling of our, you know, locally, from a business standpoint, for recreational marijuana. But they also directed staff to proceed with a code amendment for the development code that would propose allowing a sales facility, sales dispensary and infusion centers for medical and recreational marijuana to be allowed in any business district within the town. Now that said, we do have six different business districts currently within the development code. We have the light and heavy, the highway commercial, the B1, B2. We have the tourist commercial, the TRC. We have the downtown commercial, DC. Then we have light and heavy industrial, LI and HI. Currently, in the town, we actually do not have any property that is zoned, the TRC or the HI. Now, that would be readily available for this particular type of a retail use. We do have B1, B2. The DC downtown commercial and LI, for the most part, has been used up by the correctional facilities, although there are a couple of parcels scattered outside the core area that do have the LI zoning on them. What we're showing on page four of the staff report is a strikeout of the existing use table language. And in, and then showing in blue the proposed new language, showing those as permitted within those six business districts themselves. Depending on your action tonight, we will be moving this to the town council in the form of a public hearing and first reading of an ordinance on March the 1st. So far, you've had a meeting and discussed this on the January 21st. This evening, 5 o'clock, we did have a public neighborhood meeting advertised. We actually had one participant join us from out in Anthem, who was a past resident of Colorado and was just kind of interested in, in some of the language that came through from the state portion of it. You know, for example, how many licenses where they could be placed and things of that nature. No real major concerns were expressed, and this was more informational. Tonight is your public hearing and possible action of recommendation, whatever form that might take. And then March 1st is And then March first is the, as I said, is town council public hearing and first reading, and March fifteenth would be their second reading. At the same time, there is, um, additional, uh, ordinance being processed through the clerk's office that would address. Um, section one, five, two of the town code, which currently discusses medical marijuana only. To make some specific changes to it to address both medical and recreational marijuana. Um, as to licensing, uh, requirements of the town. And they are all in conformance with what the state has provided us as far as guidance at this point. Um, that in a nutshell is a presentation for this evening, if you have any questions. Of staff, uh, you do need to conduct a public hearing, um, also prior to making any recommendation at this time.
Thank you for reminding me, I usually blow right through that. Okay, open it up to the commission, questions, comments? I have a comment. Um, I spent a lot of years in project management. Where I controlled. Construction with a lot of heavy equipment. And my biggest nightmare would be a liquor store or a bar close by. Uh, I'm not in agreement with having marijuana present in a light industrial or heavy industrial environment. So, if the other count, uh. Commissioners agree with me, I'll. When I make a motion, I'm going to. Move that those two categories be removed.
Uh, just as a side comment, keep in mind that the types of facilities we're talking about, they, they will not permit. In-store utilization, these are to purchase and take elsewhere, you know, for your home use. Uh, just, just as a clarification, so you're aware, our current code, um, does allow, um. For medical marijuana to be sold in light industrial with a conditional use permit. And as well as in the dispensary is also allowed in the heavy highway commercial with a conditional use permit.
Yeah, it's just the idea that. You can go get some marijuana, choke up while you're on your lunch break and go back to work and. Handle heavy equipment, it's not, doesn't work for me.
No. So noted.
Mr. Chairman, I agree with you, I support that.
Thank you, Mr. Pro.
I, I do have to say, working in that field, um. Anybody who did that would walk back on the job site and be fired on the spot.
Yeah, I used to send them home too, but.
I'm just, I'm just saying, I. Not to be a contrarian, but I just think that's an unlikely scenario. I think somebody's more likely to hit a bar, have a couple of beers on lunch than they are to go get high.
Uh, I don't know, I disagree with you. Why, why open it up? Why take the, why take the risk it's not necessary, so?
Hmm, I, I, again, not being a contrarian, I'm just saying, working in that kind of an environment. Much, uh. A lot of scrutiny on that when you come back from a lunch break.
Okay, well, any other questions or comments?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Larry, Marty Sella, I know you're good about looking at what other communities are doing. Is this common as you look at other communities?
Um, yeah, we have done, uh, looked at some other communities and how they're handling, and quite frankly, there's. There's not really a common thread. There are some communities that are, uh, zoning them out completely. And other communities are completely open arms. Uh, it, you know, it's across the board, and I, I wouldn't say there's a predominant. Anywhere, e- except for the point that the majority of the ones we've looked at are trying to permit them in some form. Um, you know, because there is a sales pack, sales tax revenue that goes directly to the community. And then it looks also appears that there's going to be a, um, from the state level, shared revenue, they'll be distributed back very similar to the way. Our funds are distributed from, uh, you know, highway user gasoline tax. But I've really not seen anything that's a common thread, everybody's outlawing them, everybody's allowing them wholesale, you know, whatever, it seems to be just a real mixed bag.
I'm going to attack this from the other angle. If I was interested in making an investment in bringing light or heavy industry here to Florence. And I looked at our zoning code and said that, saw that marijuana was permitted for sale. In the same area, I'm going to operate that industry, I might think twice. About making that investment, just to get away from OSHA and all of the testing and all of the crap that goes along with it. Um, I would see it as something I would put in a negative column. So, I'm lobbying pretty hard here, um, for what I think is just common sense. Uh, and I don't say that to be insulting, it's just the way it strikes me. And maybe I'm just too old school.
I think maybe, uh, to add to the overall consideration also, um. Is the way we understand it now, the fifty-two. Medical marijuana facilities that already exist in the state and have licenses were first in line to, you know, be allowed to expand. Their market and sell recreational. Uh, over and above that, at this point, we understand that only, I believe it's twenty-six, it's twenty-six or twenty-eight, I think it's twenty-six. New recreational licenses will be allowed throughout the state. Now, there's a bit of a formula on how those are going to be approved and licensed. Uh, first criteria is, uh, there will be, first in line will be, uh, facilities in counties. Where there are two or less existing medical marijuana facilities. Well, Pinellas County already has, I think, either six or seven. So we don't fall under that criteria for getting any level of prioritization for a facility, or for a license. Uh, second on top of that, there's a, and I haven't fully digested this, there's other people at t- town more expert than I am, but. It's a kind of a ratio of one to ten, if you have ten pharmacies within your community, you can have one that'll sell recreational marijuana. Well, we only have two, we have one at Safeway and we have the one downtown by the clinic. And that's not a full-blown pharmacy, per se. So, you know, again, our, the, the town of Florence, you know, we have a, a potential, because we have had some interest expressed in getting one. Retail facility in the town. Uh, beyond that, you know, likelihood of us getting two or three licenses, you know, gets more and more remote, you know, the more you think we get. So that being said, you know, uh, we are, we, we do look at the sales tax potential and the revenue sharing potential of at least getting that one facility. And it's my belief as a, um. Well, I, as an economic developer, because I've done that title for many communities. Um, it's going to be in a place where it's going to be easy access, it's going to be centrally located, it's going to be. Uh, in a situation that's going to be easy in and out, um, so I personally, I see that either happening. In a vacancy out at the Safeway Plaza, which I don't know that there are any right now, or it's going to be somewhere around the downtown core. At this point in time, uh, that, I could be totally wrong, but that's, you know, just as from my background, that's where I see them landing. Um, uh, that being said, you know, Mr. Chairman, as far as what your recommendation is to the council, that's up to you and the other four commissioners.
Okay, any other questions and comments? Mr. Frost.
Mr. Chairman, I guess Larry, just some clarification. A- as you were going through these various, um, designations, light industrial and heavy industrial. You said that the prisons have taken up most of one or the other of those. Um, and with that disregarded, are there any light industrial or heavy industrial. Locations and functioning facilities in the town right now?
Uh, as far as having a building on them of any form, no. We have one vacant parcel of light industrial. Uh, it's privately owned, that it's over immediately south of the wastewater treatment plant on Plant Road. That's the only one that, that I can think of at this moment.
So, uh, I guess, and, and maybe I'm thinking about this too simplistically, the odds. Of one of these dispensaries coming in and wanting to locate in a light industrial or heavy industrial. In the town of Florence is so remote that we could remove those and really not cause any consternation.
Well, I, okay, that's something I'm not going to speculate on one way or the other, um. Because if somebody, if they wanted to do a small, uh, cultivation, enclosed cultivation and infusion built, you know, too. Then that little piece of industrial over by the wastewater treatment plant could be ideal. You know, it's, it's, uh, in a scenario in a large enough parcel, because I, I can't remember the size of it, I think it was forty acres. Um, that, you know, that's a pretty significant parcel, it might be something that they would be looking at, so I. You know, that, now we're getting into a little bit more speculation that I'm comfortable taking on.
Uh, I, I'm just trying to get some real world thought in my brain about what the odds of something like this happening are. And if it's, it's so remote that it's almost non-existent, then I think that there's no harm, no foul in removing the LI and HI from this.
Yeah, brief correction, that one, one property is forty-seven acres, I just double-checked it.
So I guess, Mr. Chairman, from my goofy way of thinking, I wouldn't have any problems supporting you in doing that. It doesn't sound like the odds of it happening are, are, they're, they're so remote that, why do?
Yeah, somewhere between zero and i- it's not going to happen. I agree. All right, I'll make a motion and see if it carries.
You still have to, uh, do a public hearing, sir.
Ah, Jesus, I blew right through it again. Okay, I'll open up to a public hearing. Do we have any public?
Now, there is one member of public connected, so if they'd like to speak, they can unmute themselves now and talk.
I'm sorry.
Ms. Mortensen actually joined us at the, uh, neighborhood meeting earlier on.
Does someone wish to speak?
Sorry about that, I think I was trying to figure out how to unmute. Am I speaking where they can hear me?
Ms. Mortens?
We can hear you.
Out here. There is now?
Yes.
Yes, we need name and address for the record, please.
Sure, sure, it's Carleen.
We can't hear you.
Oh, sorry about that, it's Carleen Mortensen. Is it coming through?
Yes.
Yes.
And then the address is five, seven, five, four. West Admiral Way.
Please, your comments, ma'am.
Oh, so, so I don't know that I have a ton of comments, I just had a few thoughts, uh, we are from Colorado. We've experienced the whole recreational marijuana issue. We're not great proponents of it, but these things do happen. Uh, I just really felt like I needed to be listening in and be aware of what the plans are in this area. Because later on, I can't really complain if I didn't say something in the beginning, so. So we just have a few, uh, I and my two. I guess their, their young, single adult sons, um, have experienced it all, and we're just. We, we do have our, our thoughts as to, you know, often this is compared to liquor stores. But like you, like you mentioned, it's not that it is just taken home. Um, you know, there, there is the consumption part of it, and I was just probably even more concerned after I read the article in the newspaper. I went back and listened to the whole meeting and I didn't feel as bad. But in reading in the newspaper, there was a big push for, oh, the tax dollars it will bring in, oh, the revenue it will bring in. But you should also remember that there will be safety, uh, presentations. New programs, drug addiction programs, all sorts of other things that come in with this, with this marijuana. Our police department spent more time at accidents dealing with marijuana usage. Than they did with alcohol, changed completely, these, these are facts. I've had people in accidents that when a party went to see how the, the person who had caused the accident. Had, uh, how they were doing, they opened the door and the cloud of smoke comes out of the car. You can see people driving around smoking their marijuana, so it's just, I do have concerns about it being in the community. So I figure, well, I should at least say something, and we can all have our opinions, and it is the law. And I do understand these things, but as far as citizen input, that's kind of my input. I've lived it, I have young adult sons who have lived it. And it's just not the very, um, what would you say, the, uh. The, the harmless, uh, situation that I think we often try to have groups come and tell us that it is. There is harm that does come to your community, is what happens, so, so that's kind of my comment, so.
I appreciate that.
Thank you, Mrs. Mortensen. Any other public comments? Then I'll, I'll close. The, open to the public. And I'll make a motion, a move that we. Approve with the, with conditions. The Town of Florence Development Code one fifty point oh forty-seven District Use. Regulation Tables to allow as permitted use of medical and recreational marijuana. With the exception. That medical and recreational marijuana. Shall not be available for sale in the light industrial and heavy industrial areas. Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ms. Benitez, will you poll us, please?
Yes, so there was three in favor.
No, I just want you to ask them yes or no, poll us, please.
Chair, Chairman Bronzo, how do you vote?
Yes.
Vice Chair Frost, how do you vote?
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Simmons?
Yeah.
How do you vote? I'm sorry?
I vote yes.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Prow?
I vote yes.
Commissioner Kapalongo?
I vote nay.
It's four to one in favor of the motion.
Thank you, sir, motion carried. Moving right along. Public hearing motion to recommend approval, approval with conditional or denial of the revisions of the definition of home occupation. In one fifty point oh three one, defined words. Open up to the commission, comments, questions? Do we have a presentation on this? We've pretty much been through this.
Yeah, very brief one, uh, Mr. Chairman, yes, we have been through this on a couple of different meetings, um. The, uh, staff report, the in blue is what we have discussed, and the commission has concurred on, concurred with. On pages three and four on the staff report, you met on November fifth, December third of last year for presentation discussion. That got us down to this wording, earlier this evening, we also conducted a neighborhood meeting. Uh, there were no, uh, no public that joined us to discuss the, um. The, uh, changes that were being proposed with your action tonight, with your recommendation tonight. We have this scheduled for public hearing and first reading with the town council on March first. And, uh, second reading and, um, at potential action on March fifteenth. With that, sir, that's, it concludes our presentation.
Open up to the commission. Questions, comments?
Mr. Chairman, just in case I, I was asleep with the wheel, and when I, when I reviewed it this time, I'm sorry, I didn't have my. Historic binder with me, so I couldn't look back. But there was just, there was just one of the bullet points that, um, I don't remember the wording being this way, but it, I've slept several times. And that's what bullet point one, two, three, four, five, six, bullet point number seven on page three. Which reads, there shall be no use of material or mechanical equipment not recognized as being part of normal household or hobby use. And I, I just didn't want to get us back into a corner, because I was thinking of, of someone that I know that, um. That has a home business, and they have a, a rather large refrigerator freezer, you know, the, the normal, normal household is like twenty. Cubic feet, right? Well, they've got about a thirty-five, forty cubic foot one because of the need to keep a bunch of stuff cool. But I don't think that fits into household or hobby use, could they, could this be a problem?
No, that is most. No, that is most definitely household use. Uh, we do the same thing, you know, basically, you know, especially anybody who hunts. Uh, you know, presuming they're successful, they're going to have a supplemental freezer or something like that. No, this is more, for example, let's say somebody wants to run the um, an office use out of their home for some type of heavy equipment operation. He's a backhoe operator. He can't keep the backhoe on his property. You know, this is for his office use only. Uh, same thing if, let's say you're a hobbyist doing woodworking or whatever. You're going to have your, your bandsaw or, or things of that nature in your garage or in your shop in the garage. You know, those are all considered hobby or household use. You know, we're not going to get into any issues with, with, uh, somebody has a big freezer. You know, some of us buy in bulk. That's just, we consider that normal household.
Okay, now I just wanted to clarify that so that we weren't going to be a problem in the future. Thank you.
I personally liked the way we did this and the way it reads. Any other questions or comments?
This is also a public hearing, sir?
Yes. I didn't blow through it yet. Okay, open up to the public, questions, comments?
There's no public.
Okay, then I shall close it. May I have a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve uh, the revisions of definition of home occupation in um, 150.031.
I'll second.
Who was it?
Uh, Mr. Kapalongo, I, I second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Vice Chair Frost, second by Commissioner Kapalongo. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carried. Okay, the part we've all been waiting for. Presentation, information, only general plan update.
Oh, Mr. Chairman, uh, not much has changed in uh, the processing of the general plan from our last meeting. Uh, you know, we do have, we have put the questionnaire on our website. Uh, it's active. Um, if anybody's having issues with it, they've reported to us and we are getting those taken care of. We are anticipating getting into some community, community meetings, either Zoom or live uh, by late spring, early summer at this point. Uh, but we're just moving along. It's a big project. It is going to take some time.
Understood. Any questions or comments? All right, moving along. ADOT projects.
Yeah, I put that in generically, uh, because uh, there were a couple of questions on different projects. Uh, Vice Chair Frost mentioned the north-south corridor, the ADOT made a ruling yesterday, apparently. Was it yesterday or what was?
Um, the, the county board of supervisors.
County Board, right.
Alignment.
Yeah, they, they concurred with what the town's position has been as far as having the, the alignment prox, you know, comes close to downtown, be shifted a little bit closer. Uh, the last we heard from ADOT, as I recall, that's why that caught me by surprise, Vice Chair. Um, is that uh, they are still doing some of their environmental studies on it. And what we thought was going to be a firm alignment uh, given to us, it's my understanding, it might not happen until this fall. Or, or end of the year even, as far as what the final alignment is going to be. Um, but at this point, we do know what the preferred one has, is, and I believe that was uh, presented to you by uh, the town manager, Mr. Billingsley, a few months back. Uh, he gave you a brief presentation on that alignment. And that, that hasn't changed. That's been still the designated preferred alignment. It does come close to, you know, it swings in towards the downtown a little bit as we had hoped so that there'd be a better access directly to the town core. Uh, there's looking at a couple of interchanges uh, north of the Gila River that would allow uh, pretty direct access into different development areas and potential commercial areas uh, as you go north in the uh, town's planning area itself. The um, uh, one you didn't ask about, but I think is important is the Highway 79 new bridge over the Gila River. Now, it is also moving along. Uh, we could see construction, as I understand it, start later this year. Uh, to widen the bridge, make it a little safer. And now, one of the things that we were able to negotiate is that basically uh, ADOT doesn't do bike lanes. But we were able to negotiate in the design, a widened shoulder on one side to a full seven feet, I believe is the, is the width of it. That would allow for a much safer crossing of the, of the road uh, or of the uh, of the bridge on a bicycle lane and even pedestrian for that matter. It'll be separated out by about a, I believe it was a seven foot median is the number of sticks in my head. So that's pretty significant. Uh, and then the roundabouts, uh, again, probably at the end of this year or maybe into first quarter of next year, where, where we seeing cons, potential construction at this point. They are in the construction drawing phase. Uh, we are working with them on some of the aesthetic uh, concerns of the roundabout and entry signage and things of that nature right now. And that's, of course, that's the, the figure eight uh, concept that uh, has been, just, you know, went through uh, the ADOT's um, selection process, criteria process, and was presented to the town council previously. So those are the three ADOT projects going on right now. As far as firm dates on any of them, we don't have those yet, which is pretty true to form for ADOT projects.
Okay. Any questions or comments?
Um, Mr. Chairman, maybe uh, just uh, add a, add a comment, just because I got curious and went and asked our engineers the other day. Um, if you've been north on Ironwood, you know that it's, it squeezes down north of Jermaine there for, for a bit. And uh, basically what's happening there is um, ADOT is going to be constructing the frontage roads for the future 24 to put traffic on those frontage roads to help alleviate problems so that they can still leave the corridor open to build the actual 24 freeway. But those are under construction right now. Probably we won't be able to use them for another, you know, year or two, but at, at least that's if you know, if you drive up there, you understand what's going on.
Yeah. And that, and that's actually a very positive sign because that means that ADOT is moving forward with this entire free, freeway project.
I wonder if it's still tied up in the courts?
It is. Uh, it'll be going to the Arizona Supreme Court. I do not know what the dates are at this point. I believe that's coming up this spring, I, but I don't have a firm date.
Well, we'll turn slow. Any other questions or comments? Okay. Uh, grinders?
Uh, you ask about that as a status report. They are in the uh, negotiation stage right now with the town on a pre-annexation agreement. Uh, as, and this basically gets down into the details of how they're going to build, what some of their phasing may be, what the responsibilities of grinders as far as providing the town with certain types of facilities. Uh, as you're, as you recall, may recall, there was discussion about a temporary um, uh, public safety site in the upper northeast corner of their property, things of that nature. That's all being uh, locked down right now in the negotiations on the pre-annexation agreement, which will ultimately be a uh, council action along with the annexation itself. They have not initiated the annexation uh, at this point, because once you initiate it, you're on a timetable. And so they want to have the agreement pretty much wrapped up first before they start that clock. But they are moving ahead. Uh, they've got a lot of their financing in place, we understand. So it's still an active project.
Okay, well, we'll see. Any questions or comments on grinders?
Um, a simple, I guess it, Larry, when we had the public hearing on grinders, there were people from across the street in Magna Ranch that said that they would like to approach the town about annexation into the town of that development. Is anything progressing on that?
Well, I've been in contact and discussion with them, um, and walked through the process with them. They are working on it internally with their own HOA and residence at this point in time, the last I heard. So yeah, it's, it's, it last, our last discussion was positive.
That's great. If memory serves, we did try to annex them some years ago. It did not work out well.
And it was developer, it was still predominantly developer owned at that point.
Right.
And uh, now that it's predominantly residents within the area, they, they have the controlling percentage now. You know, we're, we're presuming that's what caused the change.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions or comments on grinders?
Thank you, no.
Okay, moving right along, future agenda items?
Okay, we're not, we don't know when these are going to get scheduled yet because they're still in the review stage. But we do have the superstar car wash, which would be located immediately north of the recently approved Big O Tire in the Safeway Plaza. Uh, we do have a temporary use permit coming to you. Uh, I believe in your first March meeting for a uh, a UTV
rental.
Rental facility that would be co-located out at the river bottom. This would be a seasonal. Uh, well, it could be per, more permanent than that. It's kind of, they're testing the, the waters locally on whether or not rental of side by sides is something that would be marketable to any great extent. So we, if you recall, when we did the update to the code, um, about this time last year, as a matter of fact, we added provisions for temporary use permits. And so something up to 45 days can be approved administratively. From 45 days to two years has to come through the planning commission. So that application is, is pending right now. They have a couple of little odds and ends to finish up on it. And we're trying to get that moving forward to, to have it in front of you on your March 4th meeting. Uh, also, you need to be aware that um, American Leadership Academy has put their project on hold uh, for, for 12 months. Uh, well, it would probably be less than 12 months because they're talking about, I'm sorry?
They're looking at May to start restart.
To, to, from our end, because they, they're actually looking at opening um, the fall term of 2022, not 2021. They've just, they've kicked that part of it back a year. So they've put the design review just on temporary hold, but you'll be seeing that in the near future too. They were going to make a few modifications in their site plan and possibly to their uh, building elevation. So rather than moving forward and having to amend it later, they just put it on temporary hold.
Good. Any other questions or comments?
Just, just a comment about the last thing about the ALA. Uh, Larry or Marty Sella, are, are they addressing with their new designs the terrible traffic problem out there?
Uh, we'd have to ask actually our engineering department on that. They've been working directly with engineering on all types of issues, primarily on, on utility extension as much as anything else. Uh, getting, as far as the traffic, are you talking about at the intersection itself or just entering and exiting the ALA?
I, I just noticed when they're doing, I don't know if it's the beginning of the day or what's happened, but um, cars are parked along Hunt Highway for um, 100 yards or more out on it. It's not a problem right now.
Right.
Because there's not, but when, when Hunt Highway gets built out, that will be a huge problem.
Yeah, that has been part of the discussion. At this point, uh, the proposal for what they'll be bringing forward to you actually brings a lot of the parking back into that second par, parcel, you know, it's a parcel to the immediately west of where the existing one is. So it'll front on Franklin Road and then there'll be an interconnect internal to, that, that ties the two properties together, the current facility and then the uh, high school that'll be built to the west. So they're integrating all of the parking together to make the circulation flow better. Uh, things of that nature. But um, you know, we'll, we'll go ahead and raise your concern with uh, the town engineer, just to be certain that he's looking at it.
And I, I hope I wasn't, um, I don't want, I want to make sure I wasn't misinterpreted. It's not the parking that's concerned, it's the parents staging, drop off or pick up children.
Right.
Yeah, I noticed a lot in the afternoon during pickup time. Um, I have also noticed people cutting through the property that I believe is owned by the LDS church during that same time to try and get around the lines that are on Hunt Highway.
Oh, on the north side?
Yeah.
Okay, good to know.
So, but I also know that the police have been out there and so they may have curtailed that after the couple of times that I saw it.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions or comments? All right, then we'll move along, call to the public. Commission response, do we have any? Any public?
There's no public. There's no public con, connected right now.
Okay, then I will close, call to the public and open up to the commission, current events only, gentlemen. No news out there? Okay, and I will close, call to the commission and ask for a motion for adjournment.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion that we adjourn.
There's a second.
I'll second.
So I have a motion by Commissioner Pro, second by Commissioner Kapalongo. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? I guess we won't have to count that one. Okay. Gentlemen, Ms. Benitez, it's been a little slice of heaven. Have a good night.